Please stand and join us in the flag salute. Thank you. There was no action taken during closed session? Prior to the start of the meeting, I have one announcement, and that is that the administration requests the board add an action item to tonight's agenda. The action item is to increase the daily rate for substitute teachers for the 2021-22 school year. This matter came to the administration's attention subsequent to the posting of the agenda. That being said, is there a motion and a second to add this item to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add this item to the agenda.
Thank you, Gracie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malson to add action item number 212236. Board consideration of approval of increase in substitute teacher pay rate, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Wesley Cagle?
Aye.
Who am I missing here? Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item B, board meeting protocol. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Silva. I will read our board meeting protocol. Our meeting is being recorded tonight. The meeting is open to the public, and this meeting is being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. For public comment, following bylaw 9323, public comments are three minutes per agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item to 20 minutes. With board consent, board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. Regular board meetings shall be adjourned by 10:30. Email public comment can be sent to superintendent@galtk12.ca.us 24 hours before the meeting, and will be read aloud by a meeting facilitator. Email public comments are limited to 450 words. In-person public comments, you can please complete a public comment form, a card over there by the table, indicating the item you wish to address and give to the board meeting assistant. Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda item for non-agenda items. Vote and connectivity for action items, the motion will be followed by a rule call vote. Should a board member attend the meeting remotely and lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed five minutes before reconvening.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to item E, communication.
Thank you. We have received communication from Sacramento County Office of Education that our budget, adopted budget 2122 that we presented to SCOE in June has been approved by our county office. They have noted that we have at least a 3% unrestricted reserve for the following years, three years out. They've also noted that we will need to make some adjustments because we are deficit spending in 2223 and 2324. The amounts that they have here for deficit spending are different now because you've seen an updated budget with the revisions. So we're only deficit spending by $1 million based on the last budget that you approved. So we will address that. They have also noted, confirmed that our ADA is decreasing and that we've noted that for the next couple of years. And they've also included comment that we have not settled negotiations. We have not settled salary negotiations for classified or certificated staff, and just the process that we need to follow with SCOE before we do that.
Okay, then we'll move on to item F, reports. Yeah, go ahead. Start with El Cap Gold One.
Thank you. We have Claudia del Toro Anguiano that is going to present for us El Cap Gold One, our professional learning day on September 7th.
Thank you, Lois. So for this school year, we have September 7th, October 11th, and March 7th. Those days have been identified as professional development days this year. The goal during these PD days is to provide staff with training, collaboration time, and resources to continue to strengthen our professional practice and to continue to promote positive student outcomes. So one key focus of the September 7th PD day was to increase the knowledge on how reading comprehension develops. You have a copy of the schedule. You also have a copy of some of the handouts that were given out on that day. I would like to highlight a few things on the schedule. We had PK 8 teachers participate in the science of reading session. All of our TK 3 teachers participated in a SIPs refresher session. Intermediate and middle school teachers were provided with an introduction to Nuzella. We talked about Nuzella last time we met. PE music and support staff collaborated on best practices and the coordination of services or activities as a K8 team. Leanne Van Cleve, our district behavior analyst, provided crisis prevention intervention training to specific staff to complete the process of certification. And I also want to highlight that Gina Fuentes and Julie Grandinetti, District TOSAS, provided all teachers with the opportunity to receive individual support and guidance on synergy. So all in all, it was a very productive day. Again, you can see on the agenda, it was filled with different options, different sessions. But we thought it was definitely important for all of our teachers from preschool to middle school to hear the same message on the science of reading.
It was a full day, a great day of learning, lots of great breakout sessions. The feedback that I read from staff related to the reading training, the strategies of reading was very positive. We had great presenters. Our curriculum department did a great job organizing the day. And we have another full day packed for our next training day in October.
And I do want to thank April Heron. She is our administrative assistant, although that schedule looks pretty easy to put together. It was an incredible amount of, it took an incredible amount of coordination and finalizing presenters and making sure that the sessions, you know, had enough time for teachers to travel from one site to the other. So April, thank you so much for your help with this. I just wanted to make sure that I recognize her work.
Any questions or comment? No? I thought the "not" was a really cool analogy in terms of how language develops. That was, yeah, really, for me anyway, it was a good visual. Okay, in that case, we'll move on to the next items and reports. And then there's one announcement, Lorenzo Hines was announced as making a report to us tonight, but unfortunately he's not going to be able to be here. He has another commitment. So that item has actually been scratched from the agenda.
And Mr. Hines sent his apology for the conflict of scheduling. He did, he came to us and would like to present the Galt market, and he'll plan on doing that at the October regular meeting. I'm sorry, yes, October.
Okay, so let's move on to item two, COVID-19 dashboard.
Thank you. I will talk about our dashboard, and I believe why it was going to, we're going to project this for, for the public and our board. We have been working on putting on our website a public COVID-19 dashboard that will indicate how many positive cases we have for both students and staff and the number of quarantine. We've been working closely with the high school district as well. We're going to mirror something that they have recently posted. But we wanted to share with you tonight what our numbers currently are. This is as of, it's updated since it's in your packet. What's in your packet was of last week when the packet went out. But now we have it updated as of yesterday. Very positive note that positive cases are declining. This week, actually, we've had zero positive cases. Last week, we had five. So our numbers now, and we have them projected there, our numbers now are a total of 50 positive cases since the first day of school for students and 12 positive cases for staff. It's less than 1%. I don't even think it's a half of a percent of the percentage. And it has been noted that a decrease in positive cases is not just in Galt, but it's in Sacramento County districts as well. So we're hoping this stays in the trend. And we're hoping, our goal is by next Thursday to have this public on our website, and it would be updated daily, and it would have the number of students in quarantine as well. And I wanted to also just share with you, we're closely monitoring attendance. And ADA is our average daily attendance. That's for students that are actually sitting in the seat and not our enrollment. Normally, we're at about 95 to 97% ADA. And you can see the breakdown by school. We're ranging from about 86% to 90%. So we are down about 5 to 7% right now due to illness, due to quarantine. Not as bad as we had thought. We thought it was going to be worse than that. So we're closely monitoring and updating this as well. Because we will be funded unless something changes, unless we're held harmless, we will be funded based on our ADA. So we're closely watching that.
Any questions, comments? Yeah. No, that's good to, yeah, that's good to see. I think, you know, the attendance percentages are good to see, too. Obviously, we'd always like to see them higher, but that's impressive that we're still maintaining those levels of attendance, and we're keeping positive cases down. So it sounds like we're doing the right thing.
Yes, I want to thank our health staff just working tirelessly with phone calls, letters, contact tracing, just doing a really excellent job and working very hard. And we do have one public comment related to this topic that was emailed to us.
Okay, Wes has a question.
Oh, yes.
So on this, say, a kid, a student gets, has COVID, has a 10-day quarantine at home, and teachers send them the independent study work. So will they ever be counted as on this a percentage?
Yes, they will. If, if they complete the work, yes, we will get ADA for them. So once we can change in our student information system, once we can change that to independent study from quarantine or illness, whatever, it's either marked quarantine or illness right now. Once we can change that to independent study, that means the parent signed the contract and the student did the work, then we will get credit and it will go, it'll make your percentage of ADA go higher. And our teachers have started independent study packets.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, and you say we have one public comment submitted to us in regards to this item?
We do.
Okay, proceed.
Hello, I am a parent of two children in an elementary school in the Galt Joint Elementary School District. Thank you for including information at this meeting about a COVID dashboard. I greatly appreciate this move to begin to allow for transparency so families understand how COVID may be affecting their schools. The fact that cases are divided into staff and students and by school is very helpful. However, I think that some changes are beneficial and needed. Update the dashboard daily, not weekly. Daily updates give important information to families quickly. Include active cases and total cases since school opened the school year. Continue to break it down by students and staff groups by schools. It is important to know current and cumulative cases for transparency during the pandemic. Include total populations of students and staff for the district as well as breakdown by school. This will enable people to understand percentages of COVID cases by district and school populations. At the school level, reporting divides schools into grade levels so families can better understand what is occurring. Since there is some mixing of classes per grade level, notifying families of a positive case in a different class of the same grade level is important. This breakdown at grade levels could be included in the dashboard or done via notification letters. Currently, the people who get notified of a case are those immediate class members and anyone else confirmed as a close contact. This does not include children playing closely at recess. It is difficult to confirm who played together. Since students are in grade-level cohorts, it makes sense to notify families of the whole grade level. There could be a letter informing of a positive case in your child's grade level, a letter stating that there is a positive case in your child's class, and notification for those confirmed to be close contacts. Having more detailed current information on COVID cases in the COVID dashboard as well as notification of cases at grade levels will show transparency in how COVID is affecting our schools. As we approach cold and flu season, it will be even more helpful to know what kind of COVID activity is happening in schools and grade levels. Additionally, please make the COVID dashboard easy to access and inform families on how to access it. Thank you for your consideration of these additional ways to be transparent about cases that are schools. Thank you, Laura Corin.
So I'm just curious, because as this information is assimilated, is that really practical to try and update it daily as opposed to weekly? Just based on the volume of information that's being processed?
No, that is our plan. We will be able to do it daily.
We will do, yeah, okay.
Yeah, as soon as we make a change in our spreadsheet, it will upload and change on the dashboard.
Okay, and then my other question is, what are the HIPAA considerations for the dashboard? Since we're dealing with, you know, what could be perceived as protected health information of minors?
We do. We have to be very carefully consulting with other districts and some of the large districts that are even using outside consultants to manage their COVID dashboard. What we can put is the school, and we can put how many cases by student and staff, and we can put how many are in quarantine. We can't break it down by grade level and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
So we will have on our dashboard, we will have current cases, active cases, and the number in quarantine. But it won't be broken down by grade level.
And there'll be a link on our district website?
Yes.
I did access a couple other districts, and they were very easy. From the link, you click on it, and it went right to it. So I think it should be pretty easy for everyone to access.
Yeah. We'll have it right on the homepage with the, with the link.
The high school just started a link, or, sorry, dashboard as well. So this is.
Yes, and, and we want to, we're, we've had great communication and collaboration with the high school the last couple of months in various areas. And it's important for Lisa and I both to try to do as much as we can similar. We share the same parents, same community. We were on the phone. We had our spreadsheets in place for a while, trying to figure out how we're going to track everything. And, and then she shared what they were doing, and so we had a meeting this morning, and it'll, it'll be very similar to that.
Any other questions, comments? All right, let's go ahead and move on to the next item on reports then.
COVID vaccine clinics. So we just recently finished, we had two clinics here at McCaffrey Middle School. We had one clinic on August 27th that was held in the gym. And then we had a second clinic just this last Friday on the 17th, and we had that in the BFLC. And we designated a specific area that students were not occupying during that time. We had very safe entrance, one entrance only, one gate open. We had additional staff. People were escorted to the vaccination location. It was very safe. It was very well organized. Curative did an amazing job, and McCaffrey staff did as well, just helping us, whether it was your duties or administration. Oh, there we go. We had, there were 75 vaccines taken on the 27th and then 61 on the 17th for a total of 136 vaccinations. They said it was very productive, very great success. It was one of the higher percentages they had come out for a vaccination clinic in a while. And so glad we offered it for those that wanted, wanted it. It was, it was, it was local. We had, people said they were thankful that we made it easy for them. You know, I'm glad we did it for, for people that wanted it.
And that 136 total, do we know whether or not any students were able to participate in that?
Yes, we do. They, they weren't, they couldn't give me, because of the HIPAA laws, they couldn't give me a breakdown of minors versus adults. But I was here the whole time on the first vaccination day, and I was here for part of the, the second. I want to say maybe half, listen, half, maybe 30% seemed to be students or minors. We had quite a few high school students that came over. We had some staff members. A lot of it was community, too, especially in the evening that was, that was last minute, that ran over and said, I heard you were doing it, so I'm here. I want to say, Mrs. Hamdas, you were there with all of it, too. I want to say maybe 30% minors. Mm-hmm. Lot of high schoolers. And some families, mom and dad, grandma, grandpa came and were vaccinated with their child or with their minor.
Very good. Okay, we'll move on to item G, routine matters, new business. Item 212.225, the consent calendar. Anything you'd like to bring to our attention as far as the consent calendar?
We do have some donations.
Awesome.
For Lake Canyon, Donors Choose donated STEM and classroom supplies valued at $1,940 for Michelle Wood's classroom. Donors Choose also donated math and classroom supplies valued at $779 for Katie Fuel's classroom. And for Valley Oaks, NLJ Traders Clothing Wholesalers donated 11 safety vests valued at 119. And that is clothing, the wholesalers right here in Galt on C Street.
Okay, any questions or comments? If not, then do I have a motion to approve item 212.225?
I'll make the motion to approve item 212.225.
Thank you, Wes. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. From Wesley Cagle to approve item number 212225, seconded by Tom Silva, Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Grace Malson?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item is 212.227, and that is a public hearing regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials and determination through a resolution whether each student has sufficient textbooks and instructional materials pursuant to Education Code 60119. This public hearing is now open.
I just want to add to that, that it is, again, Education Code SIG0119 specifies that we hold a public meeting. So we're asking the board, of course, to open and close a public hearing regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials.
Any requests or comments on this item?
There are no requests for public comment on this item, Mr. Silva.
Okay, in that case, we will now close the public hearing regarding item 212.227. And we will move on to item 212.228. And that is board consideration of approval of Resolution Number 2, GJUESD, Resolution Regarding Sufficiency of Instructional Materials.
So thank you. This is the second part to this. So we are requesting that the board approve the resolution certifying that the Galt Joint Unit Elementary School District is in compliance with Education Code SIG0119, ensuring that each student has sufficient instructional materials which are consistent with the content and the cycles of curriculum frameworks adopted by the California State Board of Education. So we are asking for approval.
Know every few years, seven years, something like that, the always-update frameworks? What, what is up for the curriculum? What is it?
I don't have that information with me. I can certainly share that with the team, with the board tomorrow. So each subject area, it has its own cycle. What I can't tell you right now is which one's coming up.
Any questions from the board? Or any additional questions from the board? No? Okay. If not, then do I have a motion to approve item 212.228?
I'll make a motion to approve item number 212.228.
Thank you, Gracie. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malson to approve item number 212228, seconded by Wesley Cagle. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 212.229. That is board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding, an MOU, agreement number one, between the Sacramento County Office of Education SCOE and GJUESD regarding placement and integration of a mental health clinician at school, sorry, at district schools. Is Donna able to present on that?
She's not. I said I would present for her.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is an agreement with SCOE, our county office. They are in the process of hiring for us a mental health clinician, and that staff member would be placed at Greer Elementary School. They're anticipating that we would have the hire in place by the end of October. And so there's no fiscal responsibility for us with this. We would just need to provide a work location, a classroom. They would be a staff member of Greer. About 60% of their time would be providing direct mental health services for students. And then about 40% of their time would be to help design and implement the school-wide multi-tier system of support. But they would be at the school every day, serving students, working with staff, working with administration. So we're just very excited for this opportunity to have this kind of support at our, at one of our school sites.
So was Greer just chosen by random?
No, not necessarily. We, we looked at the needs. We looked at, we, we looked at. we, we looked at socioeconomic level. We looked at the needs of referrals. We looked at how many students are in a multi-tiered system of support already at that school site. Also, the outreach consultant we have there, Sophie Lore is, they all are, but she's, she works closely. She has a lot of experience with mental health, lots of training. We thought that they would be a great team to build a program there. And just based on the needs of the school and the staff that they already have there, we, we thought that would be a good place to for this person to go.
My second part of that would be, so if it goes very well this year, and then seems to be, it's a great little thing, but is there a chance to expand and add to all schools?
That would be great. We're hoping so. I know the county has recently put out, they're putting out RFP right now. They're trying to recruit more. I think they're also actively trying to recruit funds to pay for this. So, definitely, we would like to, if, if, if the county has the funds, if they're willing to help support us this way, we would welcome more support. And then we also can make some decisions to, if this turns out to be a successful program, even if the SCOE can't provide the funds, we can look at some of our, our funds as well. Maybe we, we need to hire our own mental health clinicians.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same question. I just, I noticed that SCOE was actually expanding and or including us this year. So, my, my one question was, does, you know, what is the potential of them continuing to extend, you know, expand this? The county, you know, specifically, I mean, is it, does it look like that? Well, like you said, I guess, I guess the point is they're trying to access more funds, so they're hopefully trying to expand it more. Okay.
They are.
Okay.
Yes, they're actively pursuing. They have a request for proposal out now and they have a commitment to social emotional health. They know our commitment as well. So, we're, we would, we would love the opportunity to expand this.
Excellent timing on this, too. Any, any other questions, comments? No? Okay, then if not, do I have a motion to approve agenda item two-one-two-point-two-two-nine?
I'll make a motion to approve two-one-two-point-two-two-nine.
Thank you, Gracie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malson to approve item number two-one-two-two-two-nine, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva.
Aye.
Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Now, we'll move on to item two-one-two-point-two-three-zero. And that is board consideration of approval of G J U E S D Actuarial Study of Retire Health Liabilities under GASB-74/75 for fiscal year and June, fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-one.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we have Luis Murillo from Total Compensation Systems with us here tonight. He will be presenting the PowerPoint that is in your packet right behind this backup. I, I do want to note one typo on our write-up. When it says the district's last actuarial study was presented to the board in September of two thousand and eighteen, that was actually two thousand and twenty. We do have to bring you an actuarial report each year since two thousand and eighteen. This is a, what we call a roll-forward validation year, and Luis will explain that, I'm sure, much better than I will. And he has a nice PowerPoint for you. But this is all related to our requirements to, to pay for our retirees' health benefits. Hello, Luis.
Good morning. I'm sorry, good evening, Superintendent Yount. How are you?
Good. How are you? Thank you for being with us tonight.
Sure, of course. I'm sorry, need to share the screen here, sorry. Oh, good evening, everyone. President Silva, Steve Moore, members and members of the public. Superintendent Yount said, I'm here to really present the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty actuarial report for the district's retiree health benefits. Really, the purpose of the valuation is to estimate the cost of the district for providing health benefits to your retirees. And the benefits are accrued on the district's financials when the benefits are earned rather than when they're paid. And so, you know, what we're gonna review today is just, you know, what are the benefits that you're providing your employees? What is the purpose of the valuation? What are the results? And then, you know, looking forward to fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. And so, you know, the, the promise is that, you know, that you, you're providing your employees at retirement medical, dental, and vision. The benefits are paid until for, I'm sorry, until they each, the earlier of, you know, five years, or until they reach age sixty-five. Certificated and management employees must retire on or after age fifty-five with twenty years of service, and classified employees must retire on or after age sixty with twenty years of service. And the district's contribution is to pay for the premium up to a specific cap, which varies by, by group. And then, the, as, you know, as, as Superintendent Yount mentioned, the last full valuation was six-thirty, twenty-twenty, and that included three hundred and fifty-two employees and twenty-five retirees. Next slide here. And so, really, the purpose of the valuation, again, is to estimate the cost for providing this benefit. And so, the way we, we get to that estimate is really to collect information such as census information and premium rate information. And then we use that along with actuarial assumptions to really estimate the cost. And so, the first key result of the valuation is the stream of annual expected benefit payments for all future years. These are the annual estimated retiree health payments you're expected to make to your retirees. And the table below on the left is showing the next ten years' worth of expected benefit payments. But in reality, the valuation looks at all future years until the last benefit is paid. And so, then, once we, we take, we estimate all those future cash flows, we then bring all those future benefit payments to today's dollars with a present value. And as of six-thirty, twenty-twenty-one, the present value of all those benefits is nine-point-eight million as of six-thirty, twenty-twenty-one. But then what we do is we, we look at that nine-point-eight million and we break it up, as, as you see in that pie chart. And so, we break it up into how much have they already earned in the past? How much are they expected to earn in the coming year? And then how much are they expected to earn in future years? And so, when you break it up that way, what they've already earned through the valuation date is that five-point-eight million, so that green part of the chart. The three hundred thousand is that red slice, so that's the service cost, what they're expected to earn, you know, through fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. And then, the yellow portion is just what they're expected to earn, you know, from twenty-twenty-two until retirement. Slide here. And so, really, for purposes of GASB-seventy-five, the important number is what have they already earned? And so, that is that five-point-eight million. And so, part of the report is to show the changes from last year's report to this year's report. And so, in twen-, as of twenty-twenty, the liability was five-point-five. It increased three hundred thousand to five-point-eight million. That's the T O L, total oped liability. F and P stands for fiduciary net position. That's just a fancy term for market value of assets. In order to be, to have assets to offset the liabilities, they have to be in irrevocable trust. And so, the district does not have any, so that, as those are showing up as zero. And so, then naturally, the unfunded liability, the difference between the liability and the assets is just the unfunded, the net oped liability. And so, that's five-point-eight million. And so, the three hundred thousand, how did that change from last time? Well, there are, what we, there's, you know, categories, for instance, predictable changes. So, again, as you saw, you're still, your employees are still earning a benefit. And so, the service so, excuse me, the service cost, what they're gonna earn over the next year, that's gonna increase the liability. And then that five-point-five million at the beginning of the year was a debt, so it grows with interest. So, the, the service cost and that interest cost add up to four hundred and thirty thousand. This was a roll-forward valuation. So, what that means is we take the numbers from the twenty-twenty full valuation and roll them forward to twenty-one, so that we didn't expect any changes. So, any unpredictable changes, there weren't any. And so, the district contribution, so that's the pay-as-you-go benefits that you have every year, those offset the liability. And then, under GASB-seventy-five, there are, you know, we make a lot of assumptions. One of the important assumptions is the discount rate. So, what we're using to take all those future cash flows to today's dollars. And so, if you're an unfunded plan under GASB-seventy-five, you're required to use a municipal bond rate, a twenty-year high-grade municipal bond rate as the discount rate. And so, there was a minor change in the discount rate from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one. It went from two-point-two percent to two-point-one-six. So, you can see that there was, there was a minimal increase in your liability. Typically, if your discount rate goes down, your liability goes up. And so, looking ahead to fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, you're expected to perform a full valuation in twenty-twenty-two, because you have to do one every two years. And the last one was in twenty-twenty. We're gonna collect census information and premium rate information to perform the next full valuation. And then for looking to the, this following year, you're expected to make in retiree health payments of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And if we just roll forward the liability from this year to the next year, you're expected to have a liability of six-point-one million. But again, we're performing another full valuation in twenty-twenty-two, so the numbers are really gonna be based on, you know, when we collect that census information and those premium rates, the valuation will be based on updated information, so that six-point-one is, is probably not gonna be what your liability will be. And also, the discount rate will matter. So, we'll look to, as of six-thirty, twenty-twenty-two, what is your discount rate? What is the municipal bond rate? And then that'll dictate that, that, the liability as well. Any questions?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, I, I do have one question. Is there anything cause like a significant change in these projections?
And, and by me, so is there anything in general, you mean, or that happened over the last year?
No, just in general, like.
Oh, sure. Sure, that's a, that's a great question.
Just hypotheticals. I mean, is there anything that that we, we should be aware of that would cause like significant changes to OPB?
Yes, that's a great question. So, in general, the, these are just estimates. We know, for example, one of the things that we're estimating is what we expect future medical costs to be. And so, we're expecting a four percent increase every year. But if you see something more drastic than that, or lower than that, then that could have a substantial impact on, on the liability. Also, we're making a lot of assumptions, for example, of when we expect your employees to retire, how many will stay to retirement. So, if, if there's significant changes to that, that can impact the liability. For example, just to give you a sense, you know, how, how sensitive some of these assumptions can be, is if we're in general, we assume an employee retires at sixty, right? That means they're gonna get benefits for five years. But if they actually retire at sixty-one, then that's one year less, so that's a twenty percent change in your liability. So, that, again, because we're using a lot of assumptions, there could be substantial impact as well on that. The other thing to consider, I know it's, it's very difficult for, for, for public agencies right now, and especially for school districts, but one benefit that you can, under GASB-seventy-five, is that if you pre-fund this liability, so you establish a trust and you set money aside in that trust, you can use a higher discount rate that is closer to what you expect to return on your assets. So, for example, let's say you invest that in a, you know, sixty-forty mix, you know, sixty percent equities, forty percent fixed income, or seventy percent equities, thirty percent of fixed income. And you're expected to earn six, six percent, then that could lower your liability by twenty-five to fifty percent. Assuming you're, you, you commit to pre-funding some level that, that, you know, over time, that, that could have an impact. So, while you're now tying up, you know, assets in that trust that can't be used for anything else, there is a benefit that you're able to use a higher discount rate, which lowers your liability. So, those kinds of things are the things that could change. You know, this is a moving target, too. You know, as you saw, we're using the three hundred and fifty-two employees as of twenty-twenty and the twenty-five retirees. You know, next year, you may have more employees, and so those new employees are gonna be added to your evaluation. So, the liability can continue to get bigger, because this is a closed group liability or group valuation, which means we just look at a snapshot in time, where are your employees and your retirees? But if you have an open plan, as you ha- hire new employees, they'll, they'll be added to the valuation. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, all right. Maybe that was too much. Any other questions?
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, do I have a motion to approve item two-one-two-point-two-three-zero? I can, I'll move to approve item two-point-two-point-two-three-zero. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number two-one-two-two-three-zero, seconded by Wesley Kegel, Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Grace Malson.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to item two-on-two-point-two-one. I'm sorry, two-three-one. And that is board consideration of approval of Resolution Number Three to establish a Student Activity Fund zero-eight.
This is another GASB standard for an action item, and this is a brand-new one. So, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB, adopted Statement eighty-four in two thousand and nineteen-twenty. And it changes how we report the associated student body funds, our ASB funds. Prior to this GASB-eighty-four, our ASB funds were audited annually, but were not part of our state financial software SACS. As a response to this new statement, the California Department of Education has established a new special revenue fund that should be used for all ASB funds. This fund will be Fund Eight in our financial software, and Fund Eight will now be part of SACS, which is the financial software. When you get our budget, you have all those spreadsheets, this, this high, that's SACS. And so, now A-S-B funds have to be part of that. They haven't before. They've, they had to be audited every year, but they weren't part of that. And so, the state has established Fund Eight, and we are recommending board approval of Resolution Number Three that is attached to establish Fund Eight for ASB funds. So, we are in compliance with GASB-eighty-four. The resolution is attached, and there's no fiscal impact to set up this fund.
Are there typically funds in the ASB?
Yes, we do. Our ASB funds go to, we have checking accounts at Banner Bank where we hold our ASB funds. We still get to hold them there, the collection, everything has, has stayed the same there. But now, we just have to journal the amounts over into our SAC software. Which, I, I think it's just for more accountability. It's so that it's part of our, our software that's uploaded to the state. We, we have, we have not had to do that in the past.
Any questions? Comments? Okay, if not, then do I have a motion to approve item two-one-two-point-two-three-one?
I'll make a motion to approve two-point-two-point, wait, two-one-two-point-three, two-three-one, sorry.
Thank you, Gracie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malson to approve item number two-one-two-two-three-one, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva.
Aye.
Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now on to item two-on-two-point-two-three-two. Board consideration of approval of side letter of agreement between G J U E S D and Galt Elementary Faculty Association, G E F A, regarding acceleration blocks.
Thank you. So, for this current school year, we are
Thank you. So for this current school year, we are, we are holding a new model of extended day. And this new model is called acceleration blocks. These acceleration blocks will provide small group targeted instruction focused on either a specific skill or a couple of specific skills. And we're thinking that this will begin the week of October 12. Instruction will take place two days per week for four weeks. Attendance will be taken ideally to track the progress of the children, to see the impact of this type of intervention. And along with that, teachers will be asked to complete a form at the end of the block to identify the progress, the outcomes, and the final thoughts. You have a copy of that form in your binder. So we are asking for board approval.
And then just to clarify, as far as participation in this, this extends to general education as well as RSP and SDC students, correct?
And when this will last all year? It's a whole, for the whole?
Yes.
The whole year, so. And then the other ones is going to comment that it's, this is needed very much. So, and we all know that our students are behind. So I think it's a great avenue to, for help those students that are, that are behind, helping at least get, get caught up a little bit.
Absolutely. And we are excited because again, this will focus on a specific skill. So the group of children don't necessarily need to be or come from the same class that the teacher supports. It could be from other classes, as long as the children have that same need. And we're also excited because the groups are smaller than they were for extended day. For extended day, we ask that the group remain around 12 students. And for this academic accelerated block, we're thinking that six to eight students would be ideal. So smaller group, a shorter period of time, more focused on a specific skill. We're hoping for very positive outcomes. And if that is the case, I hope that we will find the funds to continue with this type of, of acceleration rather than the old, the old model that we had with extended day. So we are asking for board approval.
Any other questions, comments? If not, then do I have a motion to approve item 212.232?
I'll make the motion to approve 212.232.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number 212232, seconded by Wesley Kegel. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Grace Malsen?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item 212.233. Board consideration of approval of side letter of agreement between GALT Joint Union Elementary School District and GALT Elementary Faculty Association, GEFA, regarding health and safety measures to prevent the spread of COVID-19 for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Thank you. The state COVID-19 supplemental paid sick leave will expire on September 30th, 2021. And we continue to implement health and safety guidelines. And with that, we, we ask that staff stay home when they are sick, even with one COVID symptom. And we have an agreement or a side letter here with our GEFA union that we would like to extend the COVID leave, a district paid COVID leave, even though the state is ending the COVID leave, we would like to start October 1st with 10 days of COVID leave for staff. There's specific requirements on what is available for COVID leave. And we just feel it is in the best interest of health and safety for everyone that we continue this for the rest of this school year. And so staff would start over at zero, I'm sorry, the staff would start with 10 on, on October 1st. So it's not an additional 10. So if a staff member said they, they didn't use their 10 COVID leave days under the state, state law, they wouldn't have 20. They're still going to, everyone will start with 10 on October 1st. We are asking for board approval. We can use our, our federal funding, COVID funding to, to pay for this.
I'm going to comment. I think this is a very good thing, especially with COVID and we all, like, it's just on the dashboard, how many kids have missed already? And, and the staff. And the fact that the, the program, the government program is, is ending. So it's a great benefit to, to be able to offer this. So it's great that we have those ESSR funds.
Yes, it is.
Also, Ms. Bach, can we, can, can we let the record show that prior to this action item, board member Grace Malsen needed to leave the meeting? She made us aware that there was a, she has a legitimate reason to, to need to leave. But anyway, just let the record show that she wouldn't be present for the, for the following motions.
Yes, the record will show that.
Okay, thank you. So then are there any other questions or comments regarding this item? All right, then. If not, do I have a motion to approve item 212.233?
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to approve 212.233.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Kegel to approve item number 212233, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item 212.234. And that is board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding, an MOU, between GJUESD and GALT Elementary Faculty Association, GEFA, regarding short-term independent study, SDIS.
Thank you. As we've talked tonight, we know we're going to have more students absent due to COVID-related symptoms and exposures. We do have teachers that are providing makeup work for students when they are absent for illnesses. And we have some teachers that are also providing what we call short-term independent study agreements. We can provide those agreements when a student is out for three to 14 days. If, if, if we complete those, if teachers complete those agreements and the student completes their work, the district can recoup ADA when the student is out. We are proposing, we have an agreement with the union, I'm asking for board approval due to the amount of absences and workload for teachers to create these and complete these agreements. We are asking to increase the adjunct duty rate that teachers receive. Per contract, they receive $40 an hour for two hours for every agreement. And we are asking to increase it to $50 an hour. And that would be just for this school year, for the 2122 school year.
Sorry. Another great benefit of the ESSR funds. But I can tell you the, I personally knew about this because my, my wife this last week had to do like three, three, four, or five of them before kids in her, in her classroom. So, and I know it's time consuming. So it's a, this is a good thing.
Yes, it is.
Just out of curiosity, when, when did you find the time to work on this? I take it it probably doesn't happen during the normal school day?
Yeah, exactly. The, yeah, after school. Much time after school or her, like her own time. So. She got home late.
So this is, this is well deserved. I think the only reason I asked that question was to make that point. But, okay, thank you. So in that case, I will go ahead and move to approve item 212.234. And then do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number 212234, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Wesley Kegel?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 4-0.
And now on to item 212.235. Board consideration of approval of GALT Joint Union Elementary School District Board Policy slash Administrative Regulation 5141.52 Suicide Prevention.
Thank you. I can report this for Mrs. Whitlock. This is our second reading of this updated board policy. The first reading was held on Oc- on August 25th. This policy is related to the best practices for suicide prevention and intervention. One of the things I just would like to highlight is the requirement for staff development. And that's for all K-12 employees. They need to be trained on suicide prevention strategies. And we have pushed that out through our, our train, online training system. Our employees are actively taking that training. There's a, a due date by the end of the month to complete the training. And we're just, you know, we, we agree that this is a, an issue in our, for our youth and, and want to make sure that our staff have the tools to identify and how to support. And so that's, we recommend the board approval for this updated policy.
Comments?
Hey, I have a comment. This is once again, another great thing because we just had something earlier on the agenda that like, I, it's going to match up with this. So especially with the COVID and how students' behaviors had changed with the, basically their, their, this, their whole schedule, their whole scheme of things changed. You could, like I say, I, with my own kids a year ago, you could see how that was mentally impacting them. So this is another great thing because we had had students in this district in the past have actually committed suicide.
Any other comments, questions? If not, then do I have a motion to approve item 212.235?
I'll make the motion to approve 212.235.
Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion by Wesley Kegel to approve item number 212235, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 4-0.
Okay, we'll move on to item H, public comments. Do we have any requests for public comment on items not on the agenda?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Silva, we have our added agenda item.
That's right. I'm sorry. I take that back. That's right here. So we will now move on to item 212.236. And that is board consideration of approval of increase in substitute teacher pay rates. Thank you.
Thank you. We are recommending an increase due to substitute teacher shortages and due to the absences that we've talked about tonight. Local districts have already increased their daily teacher rate. And so that is why we wanted to add it as an urgent item, agenda item for you tonight. We know that October is a busy month for absences, and we're just, we want to be prepared for that. And so we are asking for a, an increase for just this school year, the 2122 school year. We would pay the daily rate of $180 for substitute teachers. And we would pay a daily rate of $200 for GALT elementary retirees and for long-term substitute teachers. And with this recommendation, also just for the 2122 school year, we would ask that we would keep current teachers at the current sub-rate for differential pay. So that's when a teacher might go out on leave and they are charged a sub-rate out of their, their daily rate. We would keep that at the differential rate of the 150 and the 160, which is our current substitute teacher rate. So would not, this increase for substitutes would not impact our bargaining unit members. And it would be just for this year.
So what, what would be the, so say I, I went tomorrow and I sub in, at Marengo Elementary. So what would be my rate if we approved this?
If you were a substitute that has worked less than 15 days in the month, it would be $180. If you are a substitute that worked, worked for us for more than 15 days in the month, or you're a GALT retiree, it would be $200.
Thank you.
Also, I've noticed news reports that Elk Grove and Lodi have also or just announced that they had increased their, their pay rates for, for substitutes. My question is, I'm assuming that we normally draw from that same pool of people. So we need to, to make this increase in order to remain competitive and still be able to draw substitutes?
Absolutely. And we have already heard from some of our substitutes that they know about the increases in other districts.
They let us know.
They let us know. FYI.
And then overall, just, I know, I think you've expressed before that we continue to have, or we struggle with shortages of substitutes, that it continues to be a challenge, right?
It is. Yeah, to the point that we're having administrators sub because we, we can't fill those vacancies. So we're hoping that with this rate increase, more substitute teachers will choose to work in GALT rather than going to Elk Grove or Lodi. Since they live in town.
So hopefully it provides more incentive.
Correct.
Excellent. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Then do I have a motion to approve item 212.236?
I'll make the motion to approve 212.236.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number 212236, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Wesley Kegel?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 4-0.
Okay, now that we've completed our last action item, we can move on to item H, public comments. Request for public comment for topics not on the agenda. Do we have any requests at this time?
There are no requests for public comment at this time.
Thank you very much. And then as far as pending agenda items, do the members of the board have any changes or additional items they'd like to see on here? Okay, no. Well, in that case, this meeting of the GALT Joint Union Elementary School District is hereby closed.